Regular session for February 8th, 2021. Thank you, DC TV. You took the words right out of my mouth. You go please stand and hold the flag with me.
Hi.
You all please remain standing for a moment. A moment of silence for all the men and women past and present. Who will help protect us and our great country. And let's not forget the health and healthcare workers. Who are to this day still fighting the pandemic on our behalf. Thank you very much. Let's get it if you choose.
Hey.
Can I, Mr. Gracie, can I just say something?
Sure.
Um, I'd just like to recognize. Deidra Ann Tavares who passed away. There was a Dartmouth resident was in today's. Standard Times, a young lady that fought the good fight and. And and she finally succumbed to her issues, medical issues. She will be missed by many. She made a big. Big sense of herself when she entered a room. And when when she went to the schools and she did her. In her volunteer work, I must say, I would like everybody to. Take a peek at the Standard Times online and read the article about her. It's lovely written. And to me, it's, you know, losing your child is so very difficult. My heart goes out to the family. And God bless her memory.
Okay, thank you. Very nice.
Quiet Stanley.
Yeah. I assume we have a warrant to sign, Mr. McGinnis?
We do, yes.
I need a motion for the.
Motion to sign the warrant. Have have. McGinnis sign it.
I don't know.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the warrant and Mr. McGinnis cited on behalf. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. Calabow?
Yes.
Hey, Sean.
Hey, Sean.
Hello, John.
Yes. Yes. Frank's freezing.
Did that cold?
No, I think he's frozen. Frank, you there?
Yeah, I'm right here.
Okay, your your video is freezing. So is your sound.
Oh, your video was freezing too.
Something's going on.
Yeah.
Comcast with its data caps. Somebody's got additional video on. Probably that Doug Roscoe guy.
Yeah, who says Zoom is hot? All right, let's try and try and start. First appointment is a hearing from Verizon. A new conduit and a handhole, whatever a handhole is. I'll open the hearing.
Handhole.
Yes, good evening.
Uh, where are you? Let's see.
Hi, my name is Ross Bilidu, representing Verizon New England this evening.
Okay.
Uh, this petition is proposing to place underground conduit for approximately 671 feet along the westerly side of. Masham Point Road with one handhole. Uh, this work is being done to eliminate some aerial. Telecom cables and poles along that stretch of road. Uh, this was started as a. Customer request. To answer your question, a handhole is simply a pole box in the middle of that conduit so they can. Access and pull necessary cable through.
Oh, okay, thank you. Any questions from the board?
None, I have none.
Anyone here in opposition to this? Anyone here in favor of this? I will close the hearing.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
And we have a motion and a second to approve this request. Uh, roll call of Mr. Mickelson.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Calabow.
Yes.
Mr. Hammond.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
And myself, yes. You're all set.
Right, thank you. Good evening.
Thank you. Take care. Uh. What about? Ever Source?
Oh, good evening. I'm sorry. I guess I missed that. Can everybody hear me?
Yep.
Okay, good evening, members of the board. I'm Jessica Elder Ever Source and I'm replacing Donna Rosa. She has retired. Unfortunately, in our favor. Uh, so we're sad she'll be sadly missed. Um, Ever Source is petitioning to install a 145 foot basketball with an anchor on Font Corner Road. And this is to provide service to the Dunkin' Donuts. Um, here at 479 Font Corner Road.
Okay. First, if you see Donna, send our congratulations to her and tell her she will be missed.
I will certainly pass it on.
We saw her here often.
Oh, yeah. She spoke highly of everyone here.
She's very astute.
That she is.
Any any questions from the board? Anybody here in opposition to this? Anybody here in favor of this? I will close the hearing.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve and a second. Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
And myself, yes.
Uh, before, Mr. Chairman, before Jessica goes. Um, Jessica, the next time you come to before the board, can we have an update on the double pole situation in town? As to how many double poles are exist and. Um, when they're expected to be taken care of. You know, double poles due to accidents and whatnot.
Okay, what I'll do is I'll have the the department that's. Responsible to get it to. Is there somebody specifically I can have them contact?
No, um, well, we Sean McGinnis, just we just want to get an update. It's been a while since we've had one. Because I know I know Ever Source was working on reducing the number. Um, over a period of time. So I just wanted to get an update.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. No problem. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you too.
Thank you.
Okay. New business. Grant update. Cody had that. Hi, Cody. How are you?
Hey, how are you?
Good.
All right, so I'm just gonna share my screen here. If I have the ability to.
CCTV can allow that.
Here we are. Okay. All right, can everyone see this?
Yep.
Okay, all right, perfect. Uh, so before I get started, just wanted to thank the board for allowing me to have this opportunity to. Not only present to you guys and give you an update, but also I think it's a good opportunity to, uh, you know, let our residents know what's going on in the community development office and how we're doing with grants throughout the town. So I figured I would start with just a brief overview of the roughly past 10 years of the community development office. Uh, you'll see, you know, roughly. We apply for eight to 12 grants per year. Uh, the amount awarded and the amount we apply for really varies. Depending on, you know, what we have going on for projects, like you'll see in fiscal year 17. Uh, we received a $5.5 million grant for the New North Library, so that inflated that amount significantly. And then similarly in fiscal year 15, uh, we had a Mass Works grant for some. Infrastructure improvements at Lincoln Park of $2 million. So that increased that amount. So I just wanted to go over a few notable grants that I've been able to secure during my time here in Dartmouth. And just some of their benefits. Uh, I was able to secure a Community Compact IT Grant, which, you know, who knew at the time would be so important with COVID going on. Uh, but it allowed us to implement our online licensing and permitting software. Uh, which, you know, Chad Deschamp in Mr. McGinnis's office has been great in rolling that out. Uh, and it's currently live in our building, Board of Health and Select Board's office. Uh, and so that's played a big role during COVID, allowing things to run smoothly. Our Green Communities Grant is an annual grant. Uh, I've played a part in securing two of these. We're working on our third. Uh, this past year, we were awarded $200,000. A little more than half went to a project at the schools for. Uh, heating system conversion that otherwise would have been a completely capital expense. We also did some weatherization LED lighting upgrades, uh, and the savings annually due to the energy efficiency will be about $15,000. Uh, we were also recognized by the Lieutenant Governor in September and the Secretary for the Executive Office of Environmental Affairs. For our work with the Green Communities Grant, uh, in our dedication to energy efficiency. A grant that I'm really excited about, uh, that I just found out we were awarded, it's our Local Rapid Recovery Plan. And so this is a little bit unique, but the grant will ultimately give us a consultant. Who I'll work with over the next several months. And they'll look at the impact that COVID has had on our business community in Dartmouth. Um, and they'll also give us a plan, some solutions that we can implement on. On things we can do to help our businesses, um, as we prepare for this economic recovery. So that's what I'm certainly excited about. And then two others that I've been able to secure recently. Um, our Open Space and Recreation Plan is expiring in 2022. Uh, that typically would have been a capital expense. But we were able to secure some funding. We need that plan in order to apply for other grants, uh, such as the land grant that we just received through. Um, for the Russell's Mill Land Conservation Project. We also secured some funding to hire temporary staff to scan and documents on our document management system. Uh, this will create some efficiency. As it will allow residents, businesses, anyone who needs to access this information 24/7. Sorry. All right, this is just a bit of an overview of the the grants that I've gone after this year. So, uh, my office has applied for eight grants, uh, thus far this fiscal year. We've been awarded six of them and we are pending award, uh, on two more, although I'm quite optimistic that we will end up receiving those. So we've applied for close to $1.3 million. And as of this morning, we've been awarded $1 million, roughly $55,000. And like I said, I think I'm optimistic we'll receive those other two. And going forward, uh, this is kind of some of my expectations for the rest of the fiscal year. Uh, some grants that I think we'll certainly be able to pursue. One of the challenges that, uh, is presented this year is some of the grants that typically open up haven't opened due to COVID. Uh, and so we look at grants that typically open yearly. And as long as they open, this is some of them, uh, you know, that I hope to pursue. When all said and done, I think for this fiscal year, it's fair to estimate, uh, we'll be able to secure somewhere in the range of 1.5 to 2.5 million dollars. And then looking even further into future, the future in the fiscal year 22, uh, you know, the grant opportunities, I think, will vary. Uh, depending on how much federal assistance gets sent out to the states. You know, with the success that we've had on the Community Development Office, there's certainly some challenges that present themselves. And so a a goal of mine, uh, since being appointed to this position has been to improve the communication. Between the town departments and my office. Uh, one thing I noticed in Dartmouth is all the staff do a really good job of pursuing grant opportunities. Um, and with that being said, I I've just tried to reach out to different departments, boards, committees. To encourage them to communicate with me directly, any opportunities or or projects they may want to pursue. Uh, and just centralizing these requests allow for multiple departments to benefit. And it really increases the likelihood of award. Uh, I'll give an example. I was speaking with the Planning Director, um, a few months ago and just, you know. Casually mentioned if they have any projects to let me know. And so, you know, recently she emailed me about a project they wanted to pursue. And I was able to, um, you know, pinpoint a grant that that we're gonna apply for. So this is the type of relationship I've tried to encourage with the, you know, departments throughout the town. Uh, another challenge can be the technical information sometimes required, uh, when we when we pursue these grants. And by that I mean, um, design plans or engineering work. Are sometimes required before we can even pursue grants. And and those themselves, those prerequisites can sometimes, um, cost significant amount of money. So. An example of that would be our dog park and sometimes Mass Works Grants, they require a prerequisite that, um, can be expensive. And then, you know, the other aspect is really just the significant human resources that are required. Um, what I like to say is is applying for the grant and receiving the award is kind of the the simpler part. It gets a lot more difficult when we get into managing the grant. Um, you know, who's gonna oversee the projects involved with the grants, you know, researching the opportunities. Uh, making sure we're complying with all recording and then closing out the grants. So, you know, with that being said, I just wanted to run you through a few grants in kind of the the reporting process that we follow.
Before you move on, could you go back two slides, please?
Yes.
Now there. Um, question on the last one.
Yep.
I'm wondering if that's a, is that a better grant than the, uh? Um, the, what the hell is it? The, uh? Uh, the Seacoast, the 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 grand, uh? What Economic Council, yes, thank you.
Yeah, so I mean, with with the Seaport Economic Council, we need to tie in some sort of, um, you know, economic development, economic improvement. And there's also a match with that, where with this Seawall Grant, um, you know, if it opens up, there isn't necessarily a match. Um, and so I think it's a, if it opens up, it'll certainly be a better option for us to pursue. Uh, but if it doesn't, it's it's something we'll certainly look into pursuing a Seaport Economic Council Grant.
Okay, I know, because I know they've been contacting us, wondering where we are because giving us grants. And for most, for the most part, I know that their grant. Uh, their co-pay, if you will, is better than most others. I was not aware that this one was probably not, so.
Yeah, we're hopeful, uh, that it opens up this year. It didn't last year. Uh, so, you know, it's something we'll monitor and like I said, if it doesn't open, then we'll certainly look to pursue other avenues because. I know it's a project that, uh, you know, we need to get done down there, uh, upon a glance at in the Russell's Mills Landing.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. And so, you know, the Green Communities Grant, you know, I'm not gonna go through every single detail and bore you guys, but. There's a lot to it. We we have to start our application, come up with a budget. Uh, there's quarterly reports we have to file, monthly we have to go through and update our energy management software. Uh, some of this is done automatically, but a lot of it is done manually. And this is for all the town departments, uh, including our enterprise funds, our police, uh, you know, you name it, the schools. So that all has to be input. Uh, and then at the end of each calendar, we submit a, uh, annual report. And then by February, we have to have spent all of our prior year grant and we have to write a final grant report. Uh, and if none, if if any of this is not done or we miss a deadline, we're automatically not eligible for the next year's grant. Another grant that my office oversees is the CPC Grant for the Affordable Housing Buydown Program. Um, this is a great program that that was started. And CPC has been done a great job of funding it and and that's the easy part is getting CPC to fund it and get that award. Uh, you know, there's so many different steps that we have to go through, uh, to to find a an applicant who, uh, is able to. Qualify for the grant, uh, and overseeing that process. And and even when the the process is done and the person has bought a home. Um, we have to do annual monitoring. We have to follow up with them, every homeowner that buys a home through this program. Um, make sure they're complying with the deed rider. And then we have to then write up a court report and send it to the Department of Housing and Community Development. And then a little bit different, uh, type of grant, as you are aware, I'm running the natural gas fuel assistance and. You know, it's $20,000, so not a significant amount of money, um, you know, when it comes to grant terms, but, you know. The the amount of, the amount that goes into it, uh, is quite significant in the state, really. Says here's the funding, um, and you oversee, you implement, you do everything. So. My office, myself, I've I've gone through, I implemented the program, uh, review all the applications. Uh, submit them for payment and and have to create reports that we send over to the state. And so, yeah, with that being said, you know, I hope this gave you all a little bit of a better insight into. How we manage our grants and just how much work goes into each of these. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Frank might be frozen. I don't know. Stanley, you wanna go and then John?
Yeah, so, uh, Cody, um, the affordable housing, uh, how many, uh, people are participating in this grant?
Yeah, we have two right now. We've opened it up twice. The first time, um, we only had one grant available. And the second time we had two available. Um, but we've only, we've only had two successful applicants and, you know, I gave a presentation recently to CPC. It's something I I'm really taking a hard look at how how we run this program. One of the issues we're having in town is when you take the amount that we're, um, we're giving as a grant. And you take the income limits that are set by HUD, you know. Most people can't afford a single family home on the income limits that are provided even with the grant. So. I'm looking at some alternatives because I do think it's a good program and and I want to see, uh, you know, continue with success.
It's a great program, really. I'm surprised we're not able to help more families.
Yeah, it it's difficult because per the Department of Housing Community Development, we have to go by, um, New Bedford's HUD HUD, uh, income limits. So really, it it sets quite a limit on the income, which, you know, most people aren't able to afford a mortgage at that income.
Exactly. Yeah, well, good job, really. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, John?
Uh, Stanley asked my question.
Oh, okay.
David?
Uh, Cody, great job. Thanks. Great information. And I think that, uh, you got a great start to your term here so far. Uh, question, in 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 looking at the master plan. And all the work that's being proposed or looked at for the DPW, would you say that, uh, in the grant potential? Um, is, uh, is pretty heavy in that direction? And, uh, would you see yourself getting involved in that, uh, in the in the in all, whatever we end up with these DPW projects?
Yeah, I mean, I I certainly, and I've reached out, uh, you know, prior to Dave retiring, I reached out to Dave, uh, quite often. And I certainly make it known that I'm here as a resource, uh, to everyone and it I'd certainly get involved. Um, you know, there's some potential Mass Works dollars out there, uh, that would be a DPW project that I would be involved in and. You know, one of the challenges, there are sometimes significant amounts of money available, but we run into, you know, the significant human resources required. Um, and and some of these projects just require, uh, not only the project management, but even the grant recording, uh, is quite extensive. You know, I find myself. Doing just that sometimes for some of these projects and never mind any of the other, uh, tasks of my position.
So so part of your work here is to decide, to determine, uh, is the work worth? Uh, and can you get the people to help you to get the grant done because it maybe, uh, may not be much bang for the buck? Is that part of the decision-making process?
Yeah, certainly. We have to look at, you know, what's out there for grants and in, you know, basically, uh, cost benefit analysis, I guess you could say, you know. Are we, yeah, like you said, are we gonna get a bang for our buck? And in in having, um, I guess, you know, mutual understanding. With departments of, you know, of what I will do, um, as far as the grant management. And, you know, but I'm not necessarily here for project management, uh, because it's not my area of expertise. I can't oversee an engineering project, for instance.
Right. But I I I think that with a new era, with a new team coming into down the road for. DPW would be a great opportunity to get more involved because I think there's a lot out there.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, anytime I come across, uh, you know, I'm always. Alerted to new grant opportunities in the state. And anytime I come across something, even if I don't necessarily know of any sort of project. I typically reach out, uh, like, like just recently, I was alerted to, um, uh, Culver, you know, Grant. And I reached out to, you know, the interim director of DPW, Tim. And just make it known. And then if he, if he can identify some sort of project, then we can, you know, move the conversation forward. But. So that's how I kind of like to start things, uh, and then if we want to move forward, we certainly can.
Great, thank you. Great job and it's nice to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cody. Any other questions from member, board members? From board members. Judy, you had a question? Judy, you gotta unmute yourself.
No. Yeah. Uh, I had a question only because he says Russell's Mills and I think history. Is there any opportunity, because I don't understand this project? To, uh, involve CPC in. Funding part of this or matching part of it?
Um, in the Russell's Mills Land Conservation Project?
Oh, yeah, I'm just asking.
There, uh, so that that's the purchase, the land, um, with with DNRT and they're already, um, they're already committing some funding for that project.
Yes, okay, but I thought you said landing.
Uh, that's for a Seawall.
Yeah.
Dias Landing.
Yeah. Oh, okay, Dias Landing. That's not Russell's Mills.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. All right, anything else, Cody?
No, I think that's it.
Well, I tell you, I'm encouraged to hear that you've reached out to the other, um, boards and committees and, um, and departments, so, um, I mean, grant money is is great. It helps, it helps everybody out, so thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity.
Okay, so, uh, we've had a little usurpation here until Frank returns from, uh, internet purgatory, so. Uh, next item on the agenda, police, uh, Police Conditional Office of Employment. Chief Levesque, you're up.
Given members of the board, um, I am here to request that you consider issuing conditional offers of employment to two police officer candidates. My intent is for these candidates to attend the next available academy. Due to the COVID restrictions, academies continue to operate at a reduced capacity, limiting available seats. I'm pleased to update the board that Trevor Gregoire, who has issued a conditional offer on January 11th, has completed all remaining requirements and was accepted into the Plymouth Police Academy and will begin his training on March 1st. On January 25th, we held a second recruit orientation, which consisted of the next five candidates on the civil service list. Our field training officers reviewed the applications, conducted interviews, and administered initial screening tests to these candidates. This orientation was followed by background investigations. Jose Santiago and Nicholas Mancuso successfully completed all portions of the hiring process. Jose Santiago was born in Puerto Rico, moved to this area when he was five years old. He's a graduate of New Bedford High School and is employed as an auxiliary operator for Covanta CMAS in Wareham. He has held employment in this position for over 10 years, and his responsibilities include training new employees. Mr. Santiago has shown that he can work a demanding schedule as a plant operates 24 hours a day, seven days a week. He is bilingual, speaking English and Spanish. He has helped to create a local nonprofit organization called Planet Hope. They have recently conducted coat and clothing drive to help local families stay warm during the winter months. Mr. Santiago resolve, resides in Dartmouth with his with his wife and daughter. The next candidate I would like you to consider this evening is Nicholas Mancuso. He is a graduate from Lublo High School and has been a resident in town since 2015. Mr. Mancuso holds a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Southern New England, sorry, Southern New Hampshire University, where he is currently enrolled in the master's program. He has worked for the town of Dartmouth as a police dispatcher since 2017. During his this time as a dispatcher, he has proven to be a reliable and valued member of our communications division. I request that the board issue Mr. Santiago and Mr. Mancuso conditional offers of employment so that we may continue with our selection progr- process, allowing us to secure seats in the next available police academy. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. Uh, Frank's back, so Frank, you get the chair.
Thanks. I just want to apologize for disappearing. Zoom keeps dropping me out. I don't know why. Probably a conspiracy.
Anti-smoking.
Yeah. Yeah, I thought we were, I thought we were hot and smoking right along. Okay, what's the board's pleasure on the, uh?
I'd like to make a motion uh, to offer the candidates a conditional offer of employment, both, uh, Mr. Santiago and Mr. Mancuso.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, let's do a roll call vote. Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Talabon?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
And myself, yes. You're all set, chief.
Thank you.
I want to thank, um, thank, uh, Mr. Santiago and Mr. Mancuso. You both showed up for for this meeting in Fianatar. You did a great job representing yourself, and just remember, as I said earlier, you never, you can never be overdressed. You look great, both of you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Good luck, gentlemen.
Uh, half, half the board doesn't even have pants on, so you certainly did a right job, so.
Which half, Frank?
I'm I'm not going to tell.
One, and now.
Sean's guessing.
Going downhill rapidly.
Okay.
Thanks, guys.
Good luck. Nice to have you.
Next topic. Village Parking Committee. Mr. Mickelson, do you?
Yeah, sure, I'd love to, um, I want to thank, um, I I've, I've searched high and low through 50 states trying to find people to help me out on this. And, um, uh, I'd like to thank, uh, Linda Hops and David Russell, Mimi Powell, Anne Sado and Jill Law for offering their services, uh, so that we can, we can find a, a, a way to, to extract some land maybe, for no other, no other, uh, just description from, um, the Dartmouth Fire Department. And and maybe some other piece of property that we're not, that we haven't found yet. But I I'd like to, uh, I think we we need to, we need to find something, the town needs to do something to offer the the, the businesses in the in the district, uh, Pied Nirem District, Business District. Uh, we need to find off-street parking. Without a secure area to to find off-street parking, the the the, uh, businesses will not be able to sustain a steady flow of, especially in the summertime, of 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 people coming to visit our beautiful town and and the beaches and the down, that downtown shopping area, Pied Nirem as we know it. Um, we need to find that. We want this to be a a a point of interest for people nationwide and statewide to come and visit our town. It's not going to happen on a regular basis if we don't have off-street parking. I can't imagine anybody that would want to say anything against any opportunity to find space to have off-street parking. So again, I want to also thank Gary Adrianes, who is just really busy. I'm glad he's busy at his business, but he offered to give us a bit of help if we need it. And, uh, he's a resident in town, in the village, he knows a lot about the village, and, um, I will, by all means, use his abilities to help us out. So again, I want to thank you all. I think you're going to all have to go down to to the, uh, clerk in Sweran, and Sean and I will find a way to get a Zoom meeting going. And then I think as the weather breaks, I think as long as we can social distance, I think we need to start walking around and seeing what's available. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Mickelson, would you make a formal, uh, motion?
I'd like to, yes, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to appoint, uh, Ms. Hops, Mr. Russell, Ms. Powell, Ms. Sado, and Ms. Law to the committee, as we might call it, the Village Parking Committee.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion from the group? Okay, roll call vote. Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Talabon?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Good luck to you all.
All right.
Thank you for serving.
Thank you, everyone.
Is Stanley going to be a member on this board?
Yes.
All right, so I make a motion that we appoint Stanley as a select board representative to the, uh, Village Parking Committee.
Do a second.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on that?
Now the number six. We have to have seven. Could we, could we have a neighbor that lives near the fire station be on the board?
We don't need seven, uh, seven, why would we?
To vote.
This is a, this is a committee to search out information, not to set pro, set precedent. Please, uh, we don't need seven.
Uh, if they, if they have a problem and if they have a consistent, uh, type, then we'll look into it, but six will be fine, John, for now.
Right.
And any, anything that's set as far as, uh, any kind of policy or looking is going to come through this board anyway, so.
Correct.
So they're just a recommending board, a recommending committee, so, sorry.
Okay, we had a motion and a second. Any more questions? Okay, let's roll call vote, please. Uh, Mr. Mickelson?
Yep, yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Talabon?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Go forth and prosper.
So enthusiastic, David.
Thank you. Well, you know, it's been a long day, but thank you. Thanks for serving. My pleasure.
Thanks, Dave.
Good to see everybody. Stay well.
Thank you. Okay. Two folks that we've known. Welcome, welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you. We're breaking up on your, um, your, uh, introduction.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I was saying that we both know these, these gentlemen, and I was wondering if either would like to tell us why they would, uh, like to, uh, be on this committee. How about you, Mr. Trimble?
Oh, boy.
Yeah. No, no audio.
We have no audio, Bill.
Unmute, Bill, unmute.
No, no, it looks like he's, it's like he's fine.
I think he has a mic problem.
He's having a microphone issue. That's where the stag is coming from.
Right, that's what I thought.
That's why I don't hear.
Yeah, definitely. Well, I can tell you, Bill Trimble is a really nice guy. He's a great guy, actually. Um, and I, um, I know he wants to be on the Pathways Committee. We need somebody like, uh, Bill Trimble on that committee so they can keep Doug Roscoe in check. Especially now that Doug's, uh, sporting a goatee.
You look a lot older.
Thanks, thanks. That's what I was going for.
You're 37. Okay. Doug, would you like to say a few words?
Yeah, sure, I I can say a few things, maybe, uh, you can see if Bill can get his mic working in the interim. Um, yeah, I, I like paths and trails. It's a pretty fundamental, and I'm I'm a big user of them of them myself. I do a lot of hiking, running on the trails in town and different places. Um, I've long kind of admired, you know, some of the long-term projects that the Pathways Committee has worked on, particularly the through path that they're trying to put up north, putting in more bike markings. Those are all things that are really valuable to me. Um, so, you know, I saw the opportunity to, uh, to hop on the committee, and it seems like something that I'd really like to get involved with, and my energy's for it.
Uh, Mr. Mickelson, how many vacancies do we have on this committee? You're muted.
Technology.
I'm that person. I always say that. Um, I don't think there's a, a number limit on the Pathways Committee, but I believe there's no number. There's available space. I think, well.
More than area. I know we had some issues a year ago or so, where some folks were dropping out. Uh, let me ask this question.
Sorry, I'm breaking up. I couldn't hear that.
Mr. Trimble, can you leave your microphone muted? You you're just picking up static. Thank you.
Uh, it's somewhere else now.
Not helping. Frank, your meeting's falling apart.
Yeah, it's his, it's his other side of his connection.
I got Zoom bombed at my, the meeting I was running this afternoon, so it's nothing. So far.
Don't jinx us, please. No way.
Uh, we'll make a, I'll make a motion that we appoint, uh, William Trim, uh, Bill Trimble, William Trimble and Doug Roscoe to the Pathways Committee.
Be glad to second it.
Okay, I was waiting for the answer to my question. I didn't know if that was.
Uh, there's no, there's no set number. I know there was a, there was about two or three people that resigned last year.
Yeah, I accepted that, but then my question was, how many are left?
I I can answer, I can answer that. I'm on the Pathways Committee.
Oh, good.
With the appointments tonight, there will be a total of five members to the the committee.
Okay, well, thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions? All right, we'll vote. Uh, Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. Talabon?
Definitely.
Uh, Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you, both for stepping forward.
Thank you, Doug. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill. Nice seeing you.
Have to bring your old bicycle if you want to use one. We don't supply that.
You got to bring a microphone, too.
Yeah.
So wait a minute, so the pineapple, how about a guitar? Will that help?
All five, as far as I'm concerned.
It's a good backdrop.
For sure.
Best art I have. The only art I have.
Love it. Love it.
Okay, uh, item E, tribute to Dan Socia. Mr. Harding? You're muted.
Okay, you can hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to visit with you and, uh, to put on the record a little tribute to our great contributor to the town of Dartmouth, Dan Socia. Well, first thing I'd like to do is read a letter I received from one of our board members, and then I'll follow that with a press release that I would like to get into the record for this evening. The, the letter is from Sally Aldrich, uh, and she says to me, "There was never a volunteer more dedicated to the mission of Dartmouth Historical and Art Society than Dan Socia. He was a soft-spoken man of few words, but when he ventured an opinion, it was worth close listening. Dan had amazing talents, and when he retired to Dartmouth, from from Detroit, I might add, a town he loved, we were all the fortunate beneficiaries. He was a true gentleman, and we have suffered a great loss with his passing. These past few years, I, Sally Aldrich, have loved working with Dan on the Quaker Records Project and all things historical. And his contributions to the DHAS website are an enduring legacy we shall all cherish." And that was one of several letters I received, uh, in tribute to Dan. And now I'd like to read a press release that went out in in January, and, um, we're going to have a little backdrop that Peter is going to put up, which is this, uh, collage of pictures and the actual press release. "It's with a heavy heart that I announce this sad message that our beloved webmaster and board member Dan Socia passed on, December, passed on December 29th, 2020, leaving a dear wife and two adult children. Dan was a man who thoroughly enjoyed learning and doing a diversity of sometimes technically challenging things, and was a quiet and modest leader, who has left a substantial legacy in the form of accomplishments in his various roles at the Dartmouth Historical and Art Society. Those of us who work closely with Dan over the last several years are dedicated to preserving, sustaining, and growing that heritage, and will maintain and grow the wonderful website which Dan conceived, designed, built, and maintained, DartmouthHAS.org. If you haven't seen it, you should check it out. We have renamed the digital library on that website, the Dan Socia Memorial Digital Library, as a tribute to his enduring legacy to Dartmouth. DHAS and all those people interested in Dartmouth history and genealogy know that there were many additional critical functions which Dan performed for the society. Among them, one is the project manager and gatekeeper for our ambitious Quaker Records Project for preserving, transcribing, and publishing over 6,000 pages of original records of the Dartmouth Monthly Meeting, which began in 1699. Two, he managed our Facebook and MailChimp operations, which comprise important elements of our visibility to the world of members and friends and the wider world of Dartmouth history enthusiasts. Three, Dan was our technical leader, and in this role took care of organizing, setting up, and hosting all our Zoom meetings, so critical during this long pandemic. Four, when the world was normal and and we had gatherings and presentations at the Russell's Mill Schoolhouse, it was our practice to videotape, edit the tapes, and preserve and broadcast the programs utilizing Dartmouth community media equipment and facilities. Dan managed all of that for us. Five, over the years, DHAS has recorded many programs, and most of them have been made available to the public through links on our website to our YouTube channel, which Dan also managed, through our, our YouTube manage. Six, in addition, much of what we do requires digitally scanning original documents and other historical items. Dan designed and built a clever system for efficiently and effectively processing these important papers. To effectively memorialize Dan, our plan is to continue his wonderful work by increasing the visibility of his projects and creations at the society via expanded use and advocacy of the society webpage, DartmouthHAS.org, its Facebook page, Dartmouth Historical and Art Society, and its MailChimp mailing list. Likewise, we will collect and post a compendium of photos and written memories and tributes to Dan from a myriad of admirers who have benefited over the years from his creative and productive contributions. Most of all, by girding our loins and learning new skills, we, as a membership body, will accept the responsibilities he so comfortably carried for our dear DHAS and continue to advance and build on them. Again, I'd like to thank you for your patience, and I'd like to thank all of the members of DHAS and the board for coming together to make the legacy of Dan something we can remember and continue. And if you haven't checked out the work he's produced for us through the website, I think you really should check it out. You'd be proud of Dartmouth to see what we've been able to do. It's a very significant amount of work, and particularly, it honors our history, and the, the town of Dartmouth is a special place because of its history. One last, one last note, Dave, just before you, I respond to you. I, I, I take the honor of having a close connection with Stan Mickelson, because when I was a little boy, and I'm an old man now, when I was a little boy, I asked a caddy for his, 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 um, in-laws, Lilian and George Joblin, uh, a long, long time ago, in the forties.
Yeah.
Caddy.
Where the mall is presently. Isn't that right, Mr. Harding?
Right, exactly. Where the mall is presently. Yes, Dave, you had a question?
Yeah, no, a question. Uh, one of my, uh, favorite writers, David Brooks, one of his books talks about one's perceived life as opposed to what you kind of want it to be versus one that's read as a eulogy to somebody and, uh, what a tribute, uh, you gave, and, uh, such, uh, it's, it's heartfelt. It's, uh, it's really a great part of the record, and it's, uh, it's nice to know, but it's also really nice to take your time to, to make this kind of presentation behalf of, uh, of, of Dan. Congratulations. It's a nice to hear. Thank you for doing it.
He is a very special man, believe me.
Amen, yep.
What comments? Uh, Sean, go ahead.
Judy?
Judy wants to talk.
I can't say anything more or as eloquently as Bob has said it tonight. This was a man who gave his retirement years to this town. He did a great deal to put DHAS on its feet. He also was not only a good worker, but a good teacher. So, some of us who are perhaps dinosaurs in the world of technology learned a great deal from Dan. He made it possible for us to carry on, and I'm really only, um, a fringe member, to be sure, but I want to second all that Bob has said about this man who was such an asset to our town.
Yeah, I had some time, um, to kill while everybody went to bed before I went to bed, and I, uh, kind of went through some of the Quaker transcripts, and I'll be honest with you, it's, it is tough to read, but, um, they have such great handwriting. So, it's, if you, if you really zoom in on the pages, you'll be able to read everything, and it's, it's, it's it's fascinating for his, uh, somebody who's into history, especially history of this town, because there was a great Quaker presence in this town. Um, it's, and it's still there today. So, um, besides, uh, you know, Dan's work, uh, I mean, this is something that's just, I think, should be seen by, um, as many people as possible, and, um, you know, I, I do want to thank the, um, the Historical, uh, Society, for, for getting this, this work on and, and getting this valuable information and keeping it, um, forever, so it's not lost. Uh, very similar, um, you know, in, in, everything was done in, in writing. It's the same thing with your, if you're Portuguese and you're coming from the Azores, um, all the parish, uh, records, the, the births, um, actually not the births, but the baptisms, the deaths, the marriages, uh, you know, are all there if you have the inclination to go look for them. Of course, you know, reading and understanding Portuguese is, is tantamount. Um, but the, um, the handwriting is, is, is phenomenal and, and can easily be followed, so. Um, but, um, stuff like doing things like this to preserve the past, especially when it's over a hundred, two hundred years old, is, is extremely important, so. Um, thank you, um, you know, to the Historical Society for doing this.
Uh, Sean, I'd just like to call your attention to that handwriting. We, we're transcribing that handwriting, and we've got it in typewritten form, so you can read that also if you have a hard time with the handwriting.
I like a challenge.
You've got a challenge with that handwriting.
And it all depends on who it is, you know, 'cause like.
That's true.
You know, it's the same thing with the Azorean records, you know, it, it varies from parish to parish, and then as you see in the same parish over the years, it changes because of the priest. So, you know, one time the, the letters were going one way, so you know that was a right-handed, then, you know, five years later, it's kind of tilted the other way, so you know that priest was left-handed.
Yeah, you, there's an old, that old saying, "I can read reading, but I can't read writing."
Yep, exactly.
Great job.
Uh, Judy, did you want to?
I would just add, whoops, yeah, okay. I would just add that Bob is very humble, but he has arranged for all these things to be published. So, they will be published by the Colonial Society, so that not only are they being transcribed by some of us worker bees, but they will be available to anyone, because they will be published when they are fully transcribed. And yes, the handwriting is difficult, but some of us who've done that for a lot of part of our professional lives of, are plowing our way through it, and Bob has a great team of people who are doing this so that it can be published, so that it will be available not only to Dartmouth, but to anyone who wants it.
Okay. I was just sitting here wondering what the board would feel about, uh, possibly getting a plaque and putting it somewhere in this man's honor.
Well, let's, let's do it.
Yeah.
Remember, I think Mr. McGinnis can work with, um, Judy and, uh, Bob and, and get the correct, um, wording for it, and, um, let's.
In a very appropriate place.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, thank you. By all means.
Okay. Anybody else? Yes, thank you. Thank you both for, uh, dealing with this and, uh,
Thank you for letting me come.
Good job.
Yep.
Thanks, Bob.
Very much, John. Okay, uh, item F. Uh, approval of bond anticipation note, inter-funding borrowing. It's gonna be Mr., uh, Greg.
Uh, yes, yes, I'm, I would like to try to put something up on the screen if it'd be possible.
Exactly. Go ahead. It's been an adventure so far.
Uh, says host disabled.
See you later, Frank.
Okay.
Bye.
All right, now where, how do I get this down?
Oh. That's his package, Greg.
Yeah, no, I got, um, this actually is not the one I wanted. This, I think, can you see this?
Yep.
Yeah.
Uh, so there are two parts to this. Let me explain this part right here. Um, uh, we have a short-term borrowing, um, that is expiring, and we need to, uh, re, um, renew that borrowing, add on a little stuff. We're actually going down in what we need to borrow. Um, we have, um, about six point three million in debt that, um, uh, the projects have an advance to the state where we need to borrow the debt. So, it makes sense to borrow this short term, so we can hopefully add it with the other debt uh, for the long term, uh, next year. Um, but any case, the, the first aspect of this is, uh, what's called an inter-fund borrowing. I, I actually am not aware if, I'm not aware of that. I've never done this myself, and I'm not sure any of my predecessors have ever done this before. But what it basically is with the library, it was mentioned during the grant participation that we're getting five point three four six million from the state. We received the majority of that, other than one million sixty-nine thousand two oh one, and that we are expecting that within the next month or two. So, it does not make sense for us to actually go out to market and borrow, given, uh, we can use in the short term our, our, uh, reserves to cover the difference until we get the grant, when we have emails saying we're definitely gonna get the grant within the month, next month or two. So, the first thing I need is a vote to inter, uh, fund borrow in the amount of one million sixty-nine thousand two oh one. And again, that, we will be getting that money in the form of a grant from the state within the next month or two.
Don't move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion. Any second, any questions? Okay, roll call, Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. Talabon?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Aaron?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, Greg, what's next?
The next thing is, uh, a banned bond anticipation note. Uh, we went out to market, um, and, uh, for the amount of, uh, it, it was actually more, but we deducting certain premiums, so the actual award will be for six million four seventy-nine, six one nine. We went out to market. We got very favorable rates. You see the word NIC there. That means net interest cost. So, we had five bidders between point two-two-seven to point three oh five. That's two tenths of a percent. So, I, I was very happy with the number. Um, uh, and the, uh, winning bidder is TD, TD Securities LLC. Um, there's this long thing that the, uh, Bond Council has us read, although all you need to do is vote it as presented and, uh, as written and presented. You need not read the whole thing. It's, uh, uh, a lot of legalese. So, I'll need a vote to, uh, to, um, uh, approve the sale of six point four seven nine, six one nine, uh, um, um, as it, to, to approve the sale of six million four hundred seventy-nine thousand, six hundred nineteen, um, as written and as presented.
Make a motion that we authorize the sale of six million four hundred seventy-nine thousand, six hundred nineteen dollars in a, a general obligation bond anticipation note, um, to TD Securities LLC, uh, as submitted in our warrant on February eighth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Second.
Okay, any questions?
Thank you so much, and one last thing, um.
We haven't voted on that yet, Greg.
Oh, sorry.
Uh, we'll do it now. Uh, Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Talabon?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, Greg, go.
Uh, one last thing. Unfortunately, um, the way they do these borrowings has not caught up with the new realities. I did email on this back and forth with Bond Council, but I, I have an email indicating that, um, three of you must sign the forms, and it cannot be a stamp. It has to be an actual signature. So, unfortunately, I'm gonna have to ask that three of you, um, uh, either, uh, come into the town hall, or we'll bring someone to you to, to sign. Um, that is the law according to our Bond Council. I'll go by tomorrow.
Yeah, I'll have, I, I'll either come tomorrow or Wednesday, Wednesday depends. Um, I have to come in and get something notarized anyway, so.
I can come.
Okay, I only need three. I can't take more than three, but three is the legal minimum. Okay, well, I'll be there.
Is that in, uh, your office, Greg, or upstairs?
Uh, I will, uh, where I, I'm, um, doing remote, uh, until, uh, Thursday, but I will have my staff work with, um,
we have, we have a copy here. Yeah, that's my board office, so I'll, I'll leave it on the counter.
So, we'll do them up, we'll come up and sign it. Yeah, great.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Greg.
Thank you.
Thanks, Greg. Okay. What's next? Uh, more of this.
Really don't want to do this, but.
Yeah. All right, we have, uh, some more common vic licenses to approve. Um, John George Ice Cream, Subway on five oh six State Road at three eighty-sixth State Road, Pisoni's, Five Guys, Naughty Dogs, Cumberland Farms, one fourteen State Road and one forty-two Rockdale Avenue, and Village Cafe.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Any seconds? Uh, roll call, Stanley?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Talabon?
Yes.
And myself, yes. And we still have a list of those who have not applied. Uh, Brick Pizza, Caddyshack, Duncan Millard's five seventy-five Dartmouth Street, Ricardo Corp, Smith Mills Christian Congregational Church, Sweet Kiwi, Wild Honey, uh, and American Auto Exports. We also have four that have applied but have not paid. That would be Java Shack, Dartmouth Roast Beef, Dockside, and Cold Stone, uh, Creamery.
John, any updates on these since, uh, the warrant was printed?
Uh, no.
So, can we, can we send, um, a letter out to the non-paid, asking them to remit, please?
We've sent, we hand-delivered letters to all the businesses.
They've applied, but they haven't paid.
Can we send?
Um, how long ago did they, did those four apply? Do you have, do you have any idea?
Oh, um, I, I can check. Uh, I know Dartmouth Roast Beef, uh, applied a while.
Right, because all these were, I mean, I guess two weeks ago, um, these were, nobody had, nobody had applied yet, right? So, it's within the last two weeks?
Um, approximately, yes, I can, I can find out.
Right, um, I mean, I'm looking at those that haven't applied. Um, Caddyshack, I think, is seasonal. I don't think they're gonna apply until March, when they want to open up. Um, generally, that's when they open up. Um, Ricardo Corp, I'm not sure what, what he does, uh, for that. Same thing with Smith Mills Congregational. I, I don't know if it's, is, is the common vic for Smith Mills used for that grab and go that they hold every Tuesday? Or is that, or is that something different?
Um.
Uh, it, this has to be something different, because they, they only started the grab and go during the COVID stuff, so.
Don't they have, uh, some type of, uh, um, you know, gatherings, uh, on during the year? That they rent out, rent out the space?
They have a kitchen, but they.
That's what I'm saying.
Okay. Cause, um, Wild Honey, I'm not sure, is it, is that going to be the same at Dayball's, or is this just maybe because of the, the sale, they haven't done it?
Um, I think I recall hearing that their, Wild Honey is still gonna be operational for next year or so. Maybe two.
So, and then the brick, I, I was up that way the other, for dinner the other night to takeout, by the way, and.
Bricks open.
They were, they were in business.
Bricks open and.
Yeah.
Um, Dunkin' Donuts on Dartmouth Street is open because.
Yeah, I was there the other day.
Getting, I'll be honest with you, the social media complaints about the traffic on weekends from Sunrise and from Dunkin' Donuts.
Yeah, it's true. You can't.
Yeah, it's true, you can't get by.
Which is something that I think uh we should just, you know. This is the, this is the toughest part, okay? You know, here we have businesses that are open, they're striving to 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 make a buck during this pandemic and and trying to find people uh to come in and and do what they have. And we know that a lot of these businesses are doing fairly decently. Some struggling, yes. Um, but, you know, somebody like Dunkin' Donuts and Dartmouth Street, they're not struggling. I mean, you know, there, there's lines all the time. And and we also have issues with traffic on, you know, you can't get by on Dartmouth Street, especially in on the weekends. You know, and somebody has said basically that they need to get, you know, a detail on the weekends. Um, you, they could split the detail, I guess, for the traffic, but it's still. I I I think what we need to do, this is, this is a separate issue, okay? I think what we need to do is we need to get ahold of the safety officer, have them review the traffic situation for Dunkin' Donuts and um, Sunrise Bakery uh on the weekends. And just to kinda give us a a report and maybe some suggestions and whatnot. I I don't wanna take any action. I just wanna see if there's a solution to fix that problem.
So wait a minute, so if Dunkin' Donuts can't afford to buy a a common vic license, you think they're gonna be able to pay, pay a de- detail?
Well, I'm just, well, let's put it this way, Stanley, I I don't want traffic to be the cause that you can't get an ambulance or fire.
Right, no, I agree.
Rad is to and from through that area.
I know where you're going, Sean. No, I'm just saying it was, it was, it was just a nasty comment. It's just, it's, it's unfortunate.
I'm not trying to, uh, to be honest, I'm not trying to be nasty. I'm just trying to work, find a, find a workable solution here to to something. Because I'll be honest with you, if we decide to take action on these people who haven't applied, you know, that bothers me too, you know? Um and I know they were all handed, hand-delivered a letter and whatnot. At some point in time, though, we're just gonna have to say, you haven't applied, shut down. You know, and I really don't wanna do that. But, I mean, come on. Brick Pizza, you've been in this town already for over a year, if not two years. You've applied several times for a common vic license. You know, what is going on that you can't apply for the, for a renewal? You know, same thing with Dunkin' Donuts. I know this is a franchise and this is a franchisee. But, you know, I mean, this is somebody's livelihood and this is a, this is a a license that is needed. Um, and as far as the auto exports go, I don't have a problem. Shut him down completely because it's an, it's an auto thing and, you know. You're selling a car without a license.
I I would, I would remind everybody that we had a very sober discussion at the last meeting. And we decided that we would find out how many of these people were operating still without their license. And we set today as the, as the final date, took something and said out a cease and desist.
Well, we already know already, we've, we've we know who who they are.
Right. Then I think we should follow up on what we said. I mean, enough's enough. Uh, we've spoon-fed these people, uh, actually Christine and the Select Board Office has 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 spoon-fed these people for a long time. And they're not doing what everybody else did correctly. And if we send out a cease and desist, uh, they'll either take care of the problem uh one of two ways. It may light a fire under their butts and they'll officially take care of it if they really want the license, or they will choose that they don't want the license and they will close. Which I'd rather not see. I'd rather they continue, but, but they can't keep jerking us around, which is what they're doing. David?
Well, first of all, we we have an obligation to all the people who follow the rules early on and that so a lot of people, but they slipped and they didn't do it, but they finally did. But um, we owe them the the courtesy of being straightforward with these others. Uh, I I am in favor, and look, I'm a business person myself. This is not about the money for the certificate. It's about either disrespect for the process or there's something really wrong and we should find that out. I would deliver another notice and say they have three days or whatever the number is, to come to the uh Select Board Office or do whatever it takes and pay and be it done, whatever has to be done, or we'll issue a uh a a closed-down notice. Uh, we owe this to the other people who follow the rules. And I, and I, I don't like doing it, but enough is enough. And these, and it's not up to us to 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 figure out why and who they are and what they did, they can afford it, doesn't matter anymore. And if they had a legitimate reason, all they do is come to us and tell us, but they haven't done that either.
Well, by the looks of this, this, the, this list, I don't, I don't think they have a legitimate answer at all. They just don't pay, they haven't paid attention. In my opinion, in my opinion.
Conjecture on our part as to why it's not done.
They just don't care.
Still, well, whatever it is, whatever it is. And I think there are other people, I got some complaints about other people who claim that there was a, you know, a improper communication or the paper wasn't there and they really didn't do anything wrong. It doesn't matter. We owe it to all of them to say, okay, here's the process and these people didn't conform.
Yeah.
The only, the only thing I would do differently to what David said is, I would combine the three days. Uh, you've got three days to do something with uh and attach a cease and desist order to that, so they already know what the ultimate uh result will be. If they don't, they do something over the three days.
Okay, whatever. I know three days is the right number, but.
Yeah, I agree. But we, but we sent out a ton of notices.
Yeah.
Uh, we've had people go by in person. We've do, we've done everything. I mean.
How much money have we spent trying to collect this, trying to collect this, this money? This small amount of money. And and not only just dollar-wise. Look at the time and energies being spent out of the Select Board Office, that we could be doing something much with an awful lot more importance than doing this.
We had a brand-new billing inspector visiting these places, and that's not fair. He's got a much, he got a bigger job. I don't care who drops off the notice, as long as they give to someone who, I would not be in favor of the billing inspector doing this. He's got a lot more to do.
No, he doesn't.
It's been thirty, today's the thirty-ninth day of the year. You know, and
Yeah.
You know, they've, they, and they, and these renewals went out in what, October?
Send, send those letters out.
So, come on.
And have the.
It's not like they haven't had the notices.
How about we get one of the offices to deliver it?
I am, that's finally, but not the billing inspector. That's a waste of his time.
Way too busy, right. Ask, d- ask the chief if he can, he can have one of the offices deliver.
Or, I don't care if it's, it could be a custodian, it could be Toby from the police department.
I mean, someone.
That may get, that'll get their attention.
Yeah. Yeah. Come on.
Are we gonna include?
Enough is enough.
Frank, we're gonna include the people who have not paid as well to get these notices?
Yes.
Yes, I would.
Yes, yep.
And I don't, I don't know if the wording needs to be exactly the same, but i- if it works, if one set of words serves the purpose for both categories, I'm okay with that. If it needs two different sets of words, I'm okay with that, too.
We got eight or ten stops to make. I said, give them to the chief and let him divide them up and let an officer deliver it.
Exactly.
And and when they're in the neighborhood.
Would somebody like to make official motion?
I make a motion that we ask the chief to send uh one or two of his offices around to each one of these businesses and and personally hand it to the manager or the owner.
With with a cease and desist order?
Yes.
But you did?
Yes, yep.
Okay, we need to decide what the date will be.
Three days from the day we deliver.
Um, it would be, make it seventy-two hours after the date of the letter.
So will time date those, uh, Sean, right?
Uh, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Deal with this problem. Uh, Mr. Nicholson.
Yes.
Mr. Herring.
Yes.
Mr. Tattelbaum.
Yes.
Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay, maybe we'll finally get this off the agenda one way or the other. And just for our information, uh, we have a list of businesses that have officially closed. And that's Cravings on ninety-eight State Road, Duke's Bakery on six thirty-four State Road, Subway at one fifty-five Farnsworth Road, and Pizza Hut on five State Road, which I still don't remember, but.
Yeah, no, it was um in the Shaw's Plaza.
Oh, that's right.
Right next to, right next to the total, right next to the fitness place.
Right, right. We were block, the Blockbuster used to be.
Right, yeah, so you, you work out, then you can go get a pizza and go home.
That should justify it.
A pizza rod, too.
Okay. Mr. McGinnis will take care of all that for us, please. Thank you.
Could this be the last time we talk about this one, huh?
I bet you it's not, but it'd be nice.
I'm, I must say, you, just imagine the time we've wasted.
Yeah, I think, I think for the record, I think that we've all tried to be very, very sensitive to the issue, understand what it's like to stay in business, period. And also what it's like to be in business during COVID. And we really extended ourselves and, and now it's a point where it's over.
We've given, we wanted, we've given discounts off of their permits and how much more can we do?
Yep. I I think it'd be okay if the cease and desist order with the rest of the verbiage uh included a sentence that said, if there's some reason why this should not be taking place, uh, let us know. So, you know, I mean, I'm, again, I'm not so hot-headed that if somebody has a really good reason why they haven't done it, first of all, they should have let us know by now, but if they did have a good reason, we could deal with that, so.
So can we tack on uh Frank Gracie's cell phone number to that?
Yeah. Yeah. Uh, you, you don't want me to go around to these people, I'll tell you.
Why you don't go out? You know, you can't go around.
Well, you know, in the three or four months where they finally get around to my group to uh vaccine, they keep them with me down the list, but uh that I could, that I could go around.
Well, you still have to be careful. You have to wear a mask. You really still have, especially right after the shot.
Yeah, seven days.
Yeah, you have to be very careful.
Yep.
You and your wife, be careful.
Yeah. We're doing it for a year. We can't wait for something to change, do something differently, you know?
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, I feel sorry for you.
We'll get there. Just gotta continue to be patient, so. I think maybe, I think maybe the next time the town gets some vaccine at the uh high school, uh, the Select Board should be allowed, uh, since we're all old people, to go, to go stand by.
Hey, speak for yourself, I'm not that old yet.
Yeah. Yeah, let's lose a little company. Be a rock group. Real rocks. Okay, uh, category three, old business, Bliss Corner update and COVID nineteen update.
Uh, no new update on Bliss Corner and then COVID nineteen update, um, speaking of vaccinations. So the uh Health Department held their first vaccination clinic at the high school on Saturday. It went very well. Uh, it was very organized. Um, we've received compliments from people that got vaccinated, how organized and friendly people were. Uh, they were able to vaccin- uh, issue nine hundred and seventy-five vaccinations, so. Uh, it was a successful event. Um, they hope to do more and um it's a good start. So, uh, you know, when phase one, step two starts where it's sixty-five and over, I think it gets, it opens up a little more. Uh, it's based more on the honor system, so I don't know when the governor is gonna uh implement that. I assume in the next week or so, uh, that's what people are speculating. Um, and then, but it's the same process where people need to go online and register. Uh, or the governor has a two-one-one number um that uh people can call as well, so.
Sean, how long did that take to implement the, that amount of shots? Do you know? Time frame?
It was six hours.
Yeah, is it, is that right, Sean? Yeah.
Um, if I may, Mr. Chairman. Um, first of all, eh, eh, social media-wise, again, uh, lots of kudos across the board um about what happened on Saturday. Um, there were some um complaints about getting access to the appointments, but um the Council on Aging worked very well with seniors who don't have access to computers. Um, and they were able to sign up a um, a lot of seniors uh for them. Uh, there were also a couple of seniors that uh I was able to get ahold of um and have them um sign up and uh I did some signing up for um a few of them there. Um, and it was, there were basically five appointments per uh time shift. Um, and the thing is, is that once it opened up, you had to go to the Massachusetts um uh mass.gov website, go to the COVID, find your clinic, and once the clinic was there, you'd be able to find the time, um, the time slots. It'll tell you what time slots were um open, which ones were closed, how many appointments. So if you had to register two different people um in a household, your best bet was to have uh pick a time that had five openings. Um, and that way you can make sure that you have at least, you get one in and then hopefully another one, and that worked out very well. Um, so the other thing, one of the comments that were made afterwards were people were asking whether or not um they should have made appointments for their second appointment. The second, anybody who walked in and received a shot uh Saturday, received their second appointment going out. So those people do not have to register for a second appointment. Uh, they already have their appointment for the second shot. Um, this will continue, um this will continue, and basically what's happening is um, the reason why there's a short timeframe to have the appointments is the town receives notice as to when they're gonna get the vac- um, the vacs, um, the vaccines. Um, and they're giving and and they may be given a number of vaccines that you're gonna get, let's just say a thousand vaccines. Well, come time for the, that would be like on a Thursday or a Friday. The town's not gonna set up the appointment schedule that, over the weekend for that. They're gonna wait until Monday until they get confirmation that they have a thousand doses. Because they will, the town will only make a number of appointments for the number of doses that they have so that, you know, you're not overbooking and then, you know, getting people upset. So, um, whatever's available is as far as vaccines go, that'll be the number of doses, that'll be the number of appointments. So that's why there's that short timeframe period. Um, and I think, if I'm not mistaken, uh, the appointments went live on um, on um Thursday? Yeah, the appointments went live on Thursday at three o'clock, and by four-thirty, they were solidly booked. So, um so I mean, overall, it is a, it's it's a huge task, it really is. Um, and there are a lot of other sites um on that list. Um, you know, you got the Ri- uh Reggie Lewis Center, you have uh Gillette Stadium. So they're going to, the state's gonna start utilizing these large centers uh to get a lot of the people uh vaccinated. So, um, if there's not um anything locally, um, you know, a short I call it a short trip to Foxborough, uh, may, may, may be well in your favor, too, so. But overall, um, I've heard nothing but uh very good things out of there. Uh, kudos to um the COVID team, kudos to the Board of Health, and kudos to the Council on Aging for the work that they did in getting this going and and completed on Saturday.
Um, and I assume, Mr. McGinnis, we talked about this once before. I assume the the um, there's no uh physical town boundaries for this.
No.
Yeah, and I, I know, and we, you, I think you expressed to me that you thought it was not legal or not capable to be doing that way. I will tell you, uh, I watched the news the other night. It is two communities that segregated. Uh, one absolutely would not give to anybody outside of their town or city. I can't remember if it was town or city. The other one gave preference to the town, the, the community members, town or city, and kept the other people on standby for the day that were able to get some, people didn't show up, so. Um, I've, I have had a couple of questions. People suggesting that it, to that residence should have gotten uh preference since there are other places that uh other people have been going, including some. One of like, there's some area locally, I think it's in the Bedford, that does not allow anybody outside of the Bedford, so.
I can follow up on that. I just think the state's website is where the registration and the appointments are scheduled. And I think the state wants to keep it open to everybody, so I can follow up with uh uh Mr. Michaud to find out if that's something that the town can do, um if it's possible, or what the state's, you know, recommendation or direction is on, in that regard.
Well, at the very least, ought to be, you know, segregated appointments so that, you know, this block is for residents and this block is for others, I mean, or something. Uh, so that everybody's not competing with each other, I mean, you know.
Well, I I think, I think a lot of it had to do with if, if a community purchased the vaccines, too. If a community purchased the vaccines, then I think they're allowed to, to do it to their own community. Um, if it's something that's distributed through the feds and through the state, I don't think that's uh allowable. I could be wrong, but I I I would think that would be the underlying reason for it.
I thought all the vaccines were paid for by the feds.
I think you can, well, let's put it this way, nothing's free from the feds.
Um, yeah.
So, um, but I I I think, I think communities have the ability. I'm not sure. I I mean, it's just, I mean, let's put it this way, there's just so much information out there. I I I don't wanna lead any information. But I think if it's anything coming from federal or state, um, that there is, um you're, you are extremely limited to um target an audience. The targeting is the phasing. That's the, that's the, that's the most important part.
Yeah, but my only point is that. Yeah, but my only point is that there are places out there that are actually doing, uh, segregation of, uh, thing, you know, that's. Just seems, doesn't seem like everybody shares different rules than we do, that's all. David, you have a question?
Yeah, Sean, um, as far as the staffing of the clinic. Uh, we have sufficient numbers and, uh, if we do get requests that people would wanna volunteer if they're qualified, is that something we would do? Uh, how should we handle that?
Uh, they can contact, uh, the health department, uh, if they're interested in volunteering. I know, um, Chris has it set up where he has, um. A number of staff from different entities, like stat ambulance, the nurses from UMass Dartmouth and staff here, uh, providing some support. So, um, but if they wanna contact the health department, they.
Think, uh, think there's a need for it?
I think he, uh, you know, in my discussions with him early on, he thinks he's all set staffing wise. Um, but if somebody's interested, they can certainly contact and then maybe an opportunity to volunteer, but I can't, I can't speak.
But also that may change if more stuff, more inventory becomes available.
Correct.
And there's nothing wrong with having a bullpen.
For sure. Thank you.
Yeah, or starting rotation like the Red Sox. Okay. Um, minutes, January.
Before we get into the minutes, Mr. Chairman. Wonder, um, I know this is not on the agenda, but I, I wanted to, to have it on the next agenda. Um, as you know, we, last year we went through the trials and tribulation of outdoor seating. Um, permitting and I know, I believe that's now available again, um, coming this year. So I'd like to try to get an early, um. An early start on this, uh, for the restaurants. And that way we don't have to go through, um. What happened last year as far as the different inspections and all that. Some people are gonna be using the same stuff, so that should be very easy. Um, and that way we don't have to have one person, um, you know, um. Being put on the hook for, uh, authorizing all this stuff. So I'd like to get this, um, this process started early. Um, and, um, and I'm sure the, the, uh, you know, the restaurants would also like to know if they're, you know. What they need to do and what they, you know, have to do to, to get going. Cause as soon as, believe me, as soon as the weather breaks and it's warm, I know they're gonna wanna, I know some people are gonna wanna put stuff out there. Especially with heaters and whatnot, so.
Good point, Sean.
Yeah, I've, I've been trying to follow this because I've, I've had some people that ask all along. Uh, are we, are we doing it? I know the state isn't here. They want to do it again, but I have not heard, I go ahead by the state yet.
I believe, um, the Mass, Massachusetts Association of Restaurants. Uh, let's see, sorry. I closed out my phone. Um, in their FAQ. Uh, it said that the state and the ABCC has extended the outdoor, oh, it says has. And it says, yes, the state has waived the requirements surrounding outdoor expansion. Um, local licensing authorities have the ability to set dates, restrictions, et cetera. We encourage local licensing authorities to finalize what is necessary over the next month. So that the restaurants can hit the ground running as soon as the weather permits, so. Uh, we can, I mean, we can have the, um, our office check with the, check with the state just to make sure. And if that's the case, then I'd like to get this, you know, like to get this, uh, button up and application process completed. Um, for availability, you know, by the, um. Mid-March or the end of March.
Yeah, I know, I know what I heard last year was that, uh, we're supposed to stop on, uh, November first. And I know the state extended that to the end of the year, but I've heard nothing about doing anything beyond the end of the year. Except the desire to do it, but they have not. That's, that's the information I have.
I think, I think Sean, you're right. Just, why don't we just get the paperwork ready? So we're not doing it at the last minute. It's a great idea.
Well, there's also a chance that they may have, uh, they may, may have some, uh, adjustments or restrictions. So I think it's a great idea to contact them first just to be sure that, uh, there's nothing changed. My guess is they'll let us do it at our own pace whenever we want, unless they have some rules we should know about.
Uh, and, and just to, to clarify, um, there's, uh, this is for the temporary seating. Um, according to the governor's order, there's some, um. Restaurants that have approached us about having permanent seating on their facility, on their property. Um, and we've directed them to go through the formal process because that is gonna be permanent. Uh, and it needs to be, uh, vetted out in the, in the, uh, formal way we've done that, so. But with the temporary outdoor seating, we'll continue to do it as we did last year and we, we will, you know, if the state has extended the order. We'll contact last year's licensees and, uh, have them renew. Should be straightforward if things are gonna remain the same and then, um, any, uh, any, any other restaurants that wanna come forward. I don't think, I think the ones that did last year, I think they'll be back. I don't think we'll have many new ones. I don't anticipate that, but, uh, we'll move them along quickly.
Okay, great.
Okay, do, do we wanna do something like those that did it last year and don't have to pay again for this year or? Uh, uh, just only new ones pay? I mean, it wasn't a big fee anyway, but.
Right. Um, well, I would say for permanent seating, um, there should be a fee. Uh, temporary seating, maybe not. There's something we can look at.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Why don't we see what the numbers are?
Okay, David?
Uh, one quick request, if I may. Uh, I've had a couple of questions in regard to the electric aggregate notices that went out and they're quite confusing and. I was, uh, I would, a request to ask Sean just for a very brief explanation as to what people got in the mail, what they should do. And, um, and, um, questions they may have on how to handle it.
So, uh, we have an elect, you know, Kathy Stanley was in here a month or so ago to talk about the electric aggregation contract. Uh, the contract was up for renewal. Uh, we went from, uh, one vendor to a new vendor, uh, Constellation. Um, so a part of that new contract is notices have to be sent out to residents, um, of all the communities. Uh, just stating that the contract has been renewed and there's a new vendor. Um, residents are automatically opted in as they were before. Uh, there are some options when they are opted in and I think Kathy Stanley explained those. There's two other options. Uh, nobody is removed. Um, now there's some other entities out there that may contact residents that we have no control over. That are, uh, individual energy resellers that might want to get people to, uh, migrate over, but. Uh, no residents need to do anything. If they have any questions or if they've been, um, inadvertently migrated over, they should contact our office. We will help them, uh, as best we can. Uh, we can't always control some of these third parties and how they administer their energy contracts, but. Um, residents do not have to do anything. They're just being notified that there's been a change in the, uh, awarding authority.
Sean, now Constellation is the new supplier, correct?
Yes.
Okay. On the notices, it says public power.
They were the previous.
They're the previous, so in, so you will see in the bills being. Generated after January thirty-first. You'll see the name Constellation, correct?
Uh, yes, oops, sorry, I'm trying to look at.
Okay, cause I was looking at, uh, I was actually looking at the bills and I noticed that, um. The price for the supplier for public power is actually more than what Constellation is, so it'll be, it'll be a slight drop. But I guess that's eaten up by the. By, by, by EverSource as the, you know, the.
Well, I, I'm trying to make it, I don't wanna belabor this, but if I'm sitting in my house and I haven't really paid attention and all of a sudden I've got three notices in my house. Uh, is there some way we can signal easily in some form that the official town notice is this? And others are, are, are whatever they are solicitations.
The letters that went out, uh, kind of tried to explain that in detail, you know, it gets confusing. Uh, you know, we tried, uh, Kathy Stanley did a DCTV, uh, public service announcement that we pushed out. Uh, we pushed it out through our Facebook and our website. Uh, so we got the word out, but if people have any questions, they can certainly contact this office and we can point them in the right direction and answer their questions.
Is it, uh, is the only option to the contact select board office? Is that the best way to go?
Oh, no, they can contact Constellation Energy. Um, I don't recommend contacting EverSource. I mean, they probably can, but I don't know how helpful EverSource would be with that.
Probably not too helpful.
No.
There's enough, there's enough information out there. I mean, basically.
On the bill.
Take a look at your bill. Take a look at your bill, take a look at the first page. And if it says public power, you're in the town aggregate, you're in the town aggregate. And then that'll change on your next bill to Constellation Energy. That's the, that's the town aggregate pro, uh, program and it should be point. Point one oh four seven, I believe, or four three is the, um, is the price. That is the lowest amount if you want, um, to go a little greener. Um, for using fifty percent renewable energy, the price will be higher. I believe that's one point one four.
It's a point one two two for fifty.
And then the hundred percent green is one.
Point one four oh one.
Four oh, okay. So, you know, if, if you wanna be greener, you'll end up having to pay a little more. Um, if that really doesn't make a difference to you and you're looking for the best rate, then stay the way it is right now.
Are, are we still doing the, uh, mirroring, uh, staffing, uh, in the, in the town hall?
Uh, uh, teaming, yes.
Teaming, we are. So realistically, you don't have an army of people taking calls.
Uh, we do, no, uh, when, you know, we're teaming, but the staff that aren't in the office are working remotely and.
But, but they're gonna get a voicemail probably. And then we return the call and the voicemail.
Correct.
Okay. So chances are they're gonna get a voicemail call and we're gonna call them back.
Uh, well, someone's generally in the office, so they should be answering the phones. Um, you know, if they're. If there's multiple calls or there's, you know, a number of calls, then yes, they go to voicemail, but they get returned right away.
Okay. Do, I take it we haven't got a lot of calls on this issue?
We, we haven't. Uh, the, you know, uh, the last time the contract, uh, was up, we got more calls. People, we tried to educate people as much as we could and I think it.
Okay. Thanks very much.
I agree with what David said originally was that this can certainly get confusing. Uh, because you see, you see a new, um, uh, business on your electric bill. And if, if you don't know who to expect, you may be assuming that somebody is hijacking your. So you, you know, because there are all of other things.
Yeah, and then you get another one in the mail, you don't know what it is because you just haven't paid that much attention. I know we've done the best, we've done a good job trying to do it, but.
Yep. Does this, does it say it on the, uh, website somewhere?
Yes.
Yeah. So the easiest thing to say is, take a look at your bill. If it says public energy, you're in the town aggregate program. You do not need to do anything. That's it. If it says Joe's Wholesale Electricity, you're not in the program.
Right, but that's the old vendors.
Right, I'm just saying, that's the old, if it says, if you look at your bill now. Or, or your January bill. And if it says public energy, you're in the town aggregate program along with twenty-two other communities. Westport, everybody.
Yeah.
The new, the next bill, it should say Constellation Energy. Same thing, you don't need to do anything.
Wasn't, just testing my memory, way back when, when we first started this, wasn't Constellation one of the original ones we started with?
No.
No, it was consolidated, I think, something like that. It was, it was close, but it wasn't, it wasn't them, no.
David, David Kressman was around then, if I remember correctly.
So it's been like four, four years.
Started with you and I.
For a while, right. It's been, it's been, we've been in this program at least six years.
Yes, I remember that, yeah.
Okay. All right, minutes, January eleventh, two thousand twenty-one. What say you all?
Me, motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve and a second. Any, any discussion? Okay, let's go. Mr. Mickelson.
Yes.
Mr. Harren.
Yes.
The Tattelbaum.
Yes.
Mr. McDonald.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Anything else? Information or anything else from anyone?
Um, no, I, I'm.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
And we have a second. Uh. Roll call, Stanley?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Uh, Sean?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Uh, we are adjourned. Uh, Mr. McGinnis and Mr. Tattelbaum.